At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? I would just note that the agenda does state that Councilmember Lazinski will participate by interactive technology. He is not able to join us tonight, so the remaining council members are all present in the council chambers. We'll move then to the first item, which would be consider the approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on October 26, 2021. The council does have the, those minutes. Are there any corrections to note?
Move to approve.
Second motion by Steve, seconded by John to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. We'll bring the items on the consent agenda up on the screen, and they include the, from the wastewater treatment facilities improvement project, we have a payment invoice to Bolton and Mink. We have a, consider the new federal grant policy, consider the application for exempt permit for United Way of Southwest Minnesota, and consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Don to approve the items on the consent agenda. Discussion on that motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. Agenda number six, the wastewater treatment facility that we actually just talked about with the bill payment, wastewater treatment facilities improvement project. We will have a project update presentation on this very large and important project that is near completion. So at this point, I'll introduce, Jason, are you going to start, and then you can introduce Bob Van Moore? Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, I'd just like to bring up and introduce Bob Van Moore, our superintendent, and Scott Trudson, our assistant superintendent, to complete the presentation. They put together a PowerPoint for us to go over tonight, so thank you.
Come on, let Scott do the PowerPoint.
Fine art of delegation. Welcome, Scott.
Mayor, council, thank you. We put together a PowerPoint, like Jason said, kind of showing what's been done in the project. I'm a big believer in pictures are easier than words, so I'll kind of go through this. First is kind of an overview. Bolton and Mink had a drone there, and they took some nice pictures for us. Kind of, there's a current picture. You can see in the upper right, there is our new cement long-term storage building. And kind of, let's see, I can point in this one. Right there is the new final clarifier. That is right there. Right there. Then there was work done in our trickling filter renovations, and there was work done, the dome was taken off, this intermediate clarifier, new mechanism was put in, new pumps were installed, the trickling filter lift station behind there. So moving forward, here's a picture of the new long-term bio-stalled storage decanting building. It's basically, it's more than just storage. We're able to decant, which is basically removing the water, or the thicker solids will float to, sink to the bottom, the water comes to the top, and then we're able to remove that. This tank is in four cells. Each cell is 475,000 gallons, total of 1.9 million gallons. This is what it looks like inside the building. We have two mixing pumps that we can use to transfer bio-solids in the four tanks. And as I started to talk about, when the bio-solids are allowed to settle, decant, semi-clear water, high in nutrients is removed via ports in the tank walls, returned to the plant for further treatment. By doing this, we're able to thicken the remaining bio-solids, increasing the fertilizer's value for farm and field application. And of course, supplying less volume is a huge money saver for the facility. Here is an interior view of one of the storage cells. It kind of shows the jet header on the left-hand side there. The pump pumps the bio-solids through there and is able to stir the tank. And that was our big problem, is we would, before in our larger tanks, we would decant, get all the liquids off the top, but then we could re-suspend the solids in the bottom, whereas this system works a lot better because of the smaller footprint of the tank. We did also add a pad behind our existing sludge mixing building, and this allows us to hook up the dragline pump assembly. So this is used to feed the tractor and the injector out in the field. It's just a cleaner way to do it. This is an interior shot of our existing mixing building, and of course, new piping was added to allow transfers to the new long-term building. And we did replace, you can see the blue valves were all replaced. We had failing valves that would not allow us to isolate tanks. Also, you can see a green pump there, kind of in the center in the bottom, that was worn out. So we put a new wet end on that. We're able to reuse the existing motor, so that was a savings. This is a picture of the new final clarifier. We've always had a bottleneck in the hydraulic capacity of the plant, just because we only had two final clarifiers, so this addressed that problem for us. This is the intermediate clarifier, right after the trickling filters. And the mechanism on this was from 1993, and is getting pretty tough shape, so we replaced all of it inside with stainless steel, which should be, have a very long life. Here's the existing mech, as was removed. You can see it was pretty well beyond repair. Because we added the new final clarifier, we had to have a new splitter box structure to divide the flow from the aeration basins into the final clarifiers equally. So this was built to address that. Also, we had a new wasting structure, return structure. Again, that was to address having a third clarifier added. New blowers were installed. Our old ones are getting pretty rough shape. They're from, again, 1993. The old ones were 200 horsepower, and they were not very efficient, whereas these are 75 horsepower and are very efficient. And one of the reasons we can get by with smaller blowers is we now have a nice zone activated sludge system. So basically, we've got three basins. Each basin has three zones. Each zone has a oxygen meter and a flow meter, and then we're able to modulate the air valves to precisely keep the oxygen level at the right level. And that's done by our computer system. It's just a picture of the screen there. We can go in and tell it what we want each zone to be, and then the computer will monitor that and make adjustments as necessary. This is a picture of the new trickling filter wet well pumps. You can see on the right-hand side, there's the motor standing up, and then the pump is, is a vertical turbine, so it's a long, long pump. I just thought I'd include that picture, because it's hard to imagine when you look at the, here's what they look like when they're installed. You can see the tops, but they replace old submersible pumps, which had a hard time adapting to the varying flow conditions. Basically, they'd run out of the curve, and then they would, they would have, they'd cavitate, and they'd have seal issues. So these pumps have a wider curve, so it's going to work very good for us. Trickling filters, we have two of them. We typically only run one at a time, and one of them is in very good shape yet, so we're just leaving that one as is. But the one that was in bad shape was, it was rehab, rehabilitated, new, all new media was installed, new distributor arms we put in. That's working well for us.
What does that media do, Scott?
The media just gives a home for the slime and the biomass to attach to. So we force air through from the top, and then the water's trickling down. So it gives the bacteria a home. It gives it oxygen and in contact with the wastewater, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. After the aeration basins, in the pump room of the main control building, we had three pumps from 1975 that were, they were very good. We had excellent service life on them, but they're getting the point that when we rebuild them, they were just too far out of spec anymore. So when it was time to replace them, we decided to go with the same pumps, being the first ones were so good. We also had a discharge header, which is, you can kind of see that, that's the up top here, the top pipe. That was actually leaking, so we had to replace that. So we had a new stainless steel header pipe installed there. Also, the old 1975 valves were replaced, too. So it's basically, it's a whole new setup, so there should be many years of life there. A little summary, nearly $15 million project fund of the Public Facilities Authority, low interest loan at 1%. Replaced a lot of original plant equipment from 1975 and upgraded other equipment that was worn out for many years of operation. Installed a lot of new high efficiency equipment that'll save electrical costs for years to come, fixed bottlenecks in the system that will help save operational costs, installed new bio-sol storage tanks to help improve operations and save costs. So I guess that is it. Any questions?
I would just, just add for the, you know, not only was this kind of a complete renovation as well as additional of facilities added, but you were able to do this while maintaining operations, so.
That's always a tricky part, yeah.
Right, so.
Just a question, do you know how much you're saving, saving on electrical costs so far, or haven't evaluated that?
Well, the hard part is, we heat with electric, electric heat, so it's probably going to be, summer's going to be a better time to figure that out. But I guess we're seeing.
It should be pretty substantial. Come fall now, we're running big mixing pumps for bio-solids, so it's hard to tell month to month, our demands change that much. But it should be substantial. Just those blowers alone, we're 200 horsepower. Now we're running 175 horsepower, about 50%. So it's substantial. That's one of our bigger power consumers.
Good. Russ?
Scott, well, this was a substantial and expensive project. Do you foresee anything coming up in the future that needs to be addressed in the next five to 10 years?
Well, it all depends on new permit requirements. But that'll, our permit is now being looked at. We've been expired since 2016, so hopefully we'll be finding out something about that this next year. So I guess I can't answer that, but we can't, we're, now everything is good.
Okay, but there could be a potential based upon the permits.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Just, can you give us a status, since it really ends up in, in your ballpark with the chlorides, going through where are we at with that, with the, you know, treatment of the new water treatment, and that was to improve it on your end?
Correct, and we've seen improvements, but we're still not down to the limit. We're going to start another public campaign, public education campaign here shortly. As we've been doing some pumps, we've been talking to people, asking, you know, if they've turned it down, or if they need help. We're not there yet, but we're a lot closer than we were, so.
Good. Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
I guess along with that, Mayor, we're inviting all the council members out for a tour if they want to. We'll probably send out a little poll or something with some times and try and get you out there and have a firsthand look at it.
Very good. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number seven, consider authorization, the resolution authorizing the execution of the MinnDOT Airport Maintenance and Operation Grant Contract. Call on Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an agreement that we, that comes around every two years out at the airports. It's a pretty standard agreement for us. It provides for some funding for maintenance and operations out at our airport. You'll note the agreement's included in your packet, and it does outline some criteria and what, what's required of us to receive the funds. This is a very good thing for us, and we're very appreciative of it. It's about, it is $91,027 per year over the next two years. Our finance office does a lot of work with administering this on our behalf, so we can answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions?
Move approval.
Also, again. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion to approve. We'll close the voting.
Let's try that one more time, Mr. Mayor.
Can you reopen it? Okay, now we'll move to a vote.
It's kind of a last second to get it in, but.
Everybody okay?
Does it make you nervous that you're the only one in the group?
No.
We'll close the voting. The motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number eight. This is the project for South First Street, Greeley Street, Williams Street reconstruction. We will consider a resolution that would order the preparation of the report on the improvement. Once again, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a project that's included in our capital improvement plan for next year. It's the complete reconstruction of South First, Greeley, and Williams Street. You do have the, it looks like the map is shown right now, and you've got that in your packet. What we're asking for tonight is just for the council to order the feasibility report, which kind of kicks off the process. By advising us to complete the feasibility report, you're not making any commitment to the project, but you are starting the process for a special assessment project. As noted in the memo, this is a complete reconstruct, it's sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, curb and gutter, driveways, sidewalk, the whole works. It's a high priority area for water main replacement in particular, with four-inch iron pipe that's well undersized, so we can answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Questions? If not, is there a motion to order the report?
So move.
Motion by John, seconded by Don. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. Moving then to the next agenda item, the agenda item number nine, the project for Halber Road reconstruction project. Once again, we'll consider the same action, the resolution that would order the preparation of the plans on this project. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Halber Road is identified on the drawing there between Michigan and Erie. It's a road in kind of tough shape. Also on the capital improvement plan for next year, no water main on this particular project, but sanitary sewer, some storm sewer, and complete reconstruction of the road surfacing and curb and gutter is what is proposed. We can answer any questions if you've got some.
Questions?
This is in the industrial arc, so this has a different cost share factor also, correct?
That is correct, yes. Go ahead, Jason.
We would propose to assess this in line with the current special assessment policy, and recent amendments to that policy have put a cap on industrial assessments. So there is a limit based on land area or frontage. There's a couple of different methods.
And the report will show if there's a change in the width of this road?
That is correct, and we've scheduled a PIT committee meeting for this project, as well as numerous others for, I believe it's in, it's in two weeks, I think, right before Thanksgiving.
Twenty-second, I believe.
Yeah, November 22nd. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Jason? If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which would be the agenda item number 10, the Batuminis resurfacing of various city streets. We'll consider a change order, the second change order, the final change order, as well as acknowledge the final pay request. Once again, Jason?
Thank you. This is our annual mill and overlay project. We had $625,000 in the budget to overlay, mill and overlay numerous streets, notably Parkway Streets and some of the Parkside area streets. We spent under that $625,000 amount, we spent $592,000 about. Council did authorize us to spend some additional money after that on some curb and gutter repairs. You may remember that, out in the Westwood neighborhood. But project went well. We would recommend to approve the final payment.
Any questions?
Move approval.
Motion by Craig, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Don. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the only discussion I have, and I'm very happy that the project overall came under budget. However, as I look at this, and there's a couple of issues, and I've had a couple of people comment on it, with that mill and overlay and the poor concrete going on, how do we explain that? And as Dunick, what's the retribution that Dunick's doing for us on the concrete that's coming right back up? Or not the concrete, the asphalt?
Sure, thank you. That was largely an issue on the state aid mill and overlay project, which was different than this one, but I believe there was maybe one location on this project. I can't, I can't remember. But Dunick has gone back and cut out those areas where we had the poor surfacing, and they've patched those, which is great. And we've also kind of worked out an arrangement on Country Club Drive because of the number of those patches. They were penalized a certain sum to help us cover the cost of a seal coat treatment next year. So we're really pleased with Dunick stepping up to the plate and, and helping to make that right and taking care of these issues for us.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number 11. The South Forest Street reconstruction project will consider the change order, the final change order, and the acknowledgement of the final pay application.
Thank you. This is, be a long time coming on this project, and one coming later, where it's a 2020 project that was held open a little longer than what we would like, but once again, there were some issues on the project with some of the work due to the drought and seeding and things like that. And really happy with how that turned out in the end. I think that contractor did a nice job. We were under budget on that one as well, I believe, just barely, and we think everything turned out great. We'd recommend final payment and close this project.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions?
And Jason, got a question or a comment? I just, I think we should thank the contractor for going back and reseeding. I think they, they seeded it three times, didn't they? And again, it was because of no rainfall in the months of June and July, but they did a nice job in the end because the grass did grow after we had all that rain, so.
Right, when conditions were better, it came up very nicely, and it looks great.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by Russ, seconded by, by Steve. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion passes. Okay, we'll move then to agenda number 12, South First Street reconstruction project. Once again, we have a, the final change order and acknowledgement of the final pay application. Jason?
Thank you. Similar to South Fourth, this was a 2020 project, or at least it began in 2020, it was finished this year. Had some seeding issues early, but came back and it looks, it looks great now. We were slightly over budget on this project, but within the 5% contingency on the project, so we think in the end, we got a really good project, and next year's proposed South First project would take off from this project and go further to the north, so it ties in nice. We'd recommend to pay the final payment.
Any questions?
Jason, you and I had a conversation, just for the public, probably 80% of that cost overrun was because of the mix put in, on the street, correct? It was about a $12,000 increase?
That is correct. There was some overruns in the paving on this project. Could have been the result of numerous different things that come together, where project limits were extended a little bit, where we put more pavement in on the side streets. There was some work where we had some pavement cut out and repaved, some of that at the contractor's expense, and some of that split between the city and the contractor. So there were just a few, a few things that came together. On the north end of the project, too, we did extend our sanitary sewer work to, down to Shepherd, and that resulted in more paving as well. So just a few different things coming together to add up to an overrun.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
I would move to approve. I'll second.
Motion by Don, seconded by John. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. So those were all project closeouts, which represented a substantial amount of reconstruction project that happened under the direction of the Public Works Department this past year. So thank you, Jason, and your, your team who all worked on this. We'll move then to agenda item number 14, the statement of annual performance evaluation.
Mr. Mayor?
13.
North First Street.
North. We had so many projects there, so we'll, we'll, agenda number 13, North First Street reconstruction project. We have the final change order, acknowledgement of the final pay application. Jason?
Yeah, thank you. We really wanted to overwhelm you tonight with payments. This was this year's first street project around the Bremer Bank area. Project turned out great. We got an early start this year, as we all remember, and that really worked to our advantage, especially with seeding. You know, we talked about the seeding issues on the other two jobs. We did not have those issues on this job. So project went very well, slightly over budget, well within the 5% contingency. We were about $5,000 or $6,000 over budget there, but we would recommend to make the final payment.
Any questions on this?
Jason, this is another one of those that you and I had a conversation on, just for the rest of the council's information. It's kind of deceiving on the numbers because of the fiscal impact. It says results in a base bid pay of decrease of $23,000, and then you're, the contract actually was $6,300 less, and then the council, and now we're asking for a recommendation for a $10,000 change order. So maybe you just want to explain that as you explain to me. It's a little bit confusing to me, and I'm easily confused, so.
I agree. We, not that you're easily confused, I agree that we made that a little, we made that a little difficult. On this particular project, we ran a change order, change orders in a way that we normally wouldn't, and it resulted in some confusion. We won't do that again, but there were change orders on the project that resulted in some extra costs, and then we underran the base pay items. So those offset to result in a $6,000 over the contract amount, an overage. The final payment is the $10,000. We were just retaining some funds. Everything else has been paid out, so it's largely retainage that we're paying there. Most of the change orders, I would note, were due to utility work as well, so those weren't things that got assessed or the city's really having to cover. Most of the change orders go to MMU, some to the sanitary sewer utility, and some to the storm water utility, and actually one to the high-rise building, but at their request. So. so that's, that's what we have going on there.
Thank you, Jason.
Very good, any other questions?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Now we'll get to agenda number fourteen, which I was anxious to get to before, so the agenda number fourteen, statement of annual performance evaluation for the city administrator. The, the council did meet in, in special session earlier this evening, did review the annual performance evaluation, and I'll read into the minutes a summary of that discussion, as well as the evaluation process. Sharon Hanson began employment as city administrator on November sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Each year, on her about the anniversary of her employment date as administrator, the city council conducts a review of the administrator's performance. The evaluation instrument evaluated ten critical performance competencies with four to five performance measures for each critical performance competency for a total of forty-eight performance measures. Each performance measure was assigned a numeric score of one to five, with five being the highest performance level. The city council reviewed the results of the performance review with city administrator Hanson at a special meeting on tonight, November ninth, two thousand twenty-one. The critical performance criteria and the compiled performance score are summarized as follows: job knowledge and professional skills, four point five; relations with elected member, members of the council, four point two seven; policy execution, four point four two; strategic vision, four point four one; fiscal management, four point two; intergovernmental affairs, four point one four; reporting and communication, four point four five; citizen and community, community relations, four point six; staffing, four point two; supervision, four point one three. The overall performance evaluation measures for all criteria from all city council members and the mayor is four point three three, which indicates a high level of performance, highly effective leadership, and performance often exceeding the challenging performance expectations established for this position. So with that, thank you, Sharon, for your service to the community for this past year.
Thank you.
Any additional comments anyone chooses to make?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
Well, again, I, I will just publicly say that I have been honored to work with Administrator Hanson, I think that she does a fantastic job, and is she perfect? Absolutely not. Does she have room for improvement? Absolutely, there's not one of us amongst this cadre of people in this room, and probably viewing as well, who is perfect, but she strives for perfection. It's a journey, not, and not the destination, and she does a really good job, she accepts feedback, positive and negative, she's responsive, she's professional above all, and it's just an honor to have her on our team, and I thank her.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments? Again, once again, thank you, Sharon, for your outstanding service to the community. With that, we'll move to agenda number fifteen, Commission Board Liaison Reports. Mine have not met since we last met. Craig?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Don?
I have not had any meeting.
John?
The only committee that met was the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, and there we discussed, there's some training oper, sessions that are being set up for the committee members, plus we're getting squared away and establish on a World Cafe to come up more to that, to come in the future, but a group, a group focus on just discussions by citizens as far as feelings of safety, are they feeling included, and a number of things like that, so that will be coming up after the first of the year, I believe February, so just keep that in mind.
Very good. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. CVB met, and just bear with me a little bit there, that one of the things that we have acted on over the course of the year is, is communities, community support grants. We have various organizations, whether it be athletic, or it be arts, or something else, hunting events, they apply for a grant through the CVB, and these grants have anywhere from a hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. Year to date, we've, we've already allocated $11,250 for these various organizations. And again, some of these events are held at the Red Baron Arena, some other locations, and so it's a way that the CVB is helping the community bring events into town, whether it be, again, volleyball tournaments, hockey tournaments, whatever the case would be. We're starting to see an increase in hotel occupancy, bringing these events into town, hopefully they, they eat at our restaurants and buy gas at our gas station, so that's a positive thing. I think that we allocated $15,000 for the year, and we've already spent $11,250, so again, that's open for the, for the groups and organizations. Red Baron Arena, they had about $31,000 in dasher sales, they had a goal of forty dashers in twenty-one businesses, it was up over last year, they got some new ones, and they lost a couple, so it was good thing. For two thousand and twenty-two, believe it or not, they have seventeen weekends booked, including seven weddings, so it looks like it's going to be a busy year out at, out at the Red Baron Arena, so that's all for CVB. Library Board met last night, a couple of things with the COVID, they're following the current guidelines and updates, and also in the branches and ballast and Cotwood, they, they continue to operate as, as, as the COVID situation changes almost on a daily basis, so. We looked at our, our revised draft budget, we settled on a five point two percent increase for two thousand twenty-two. Looking at a policy review for library materials lending, we, we revised it, we adopted the revised policy for only a, a certain amount of time. We also looked at a strategic plan draft, and we acted on a two-year proposal instead of a three, again, basically due to the pandemic, pandemic and things changing all the time. One of the, the things that I brought up, I believe, last, maybe not the last meeting, but maybe the meeting before, is that we continue to, or we started to have issues in the parking lot again with the kids from the middle school. They're getting to be, as Michelle would say, very rude. They've actually asked a couple of kids to stay out of the library, ban them for a day or ban them for a week, and they, and they know when their week is up, and they come right back, and they're, Michelle uses the term, they get together with their little gangs, and they're starting to harass patrons that are going into the library, so there is, there is a problem. We're going to send another note to the school informing them of such. Michelle has had conversations with Director of Public Safety, Jim Marshall, he feels that, that it's probably the same group of kids that are around town doing other things, but he's well aware of it. The Board has instructed Michelle not to put her staff in any, in any way of danger. If there's a problem, to call nine one one and have the police respond that way accordingly, so just to let people know that, that there are some incidences happening in the parking lot, there, there are some parents that refuse to, to go into the middle school or wherever to pick up their kids, they're using the library parking lot to pick up their kids, they're parking in the no parking lanes and, and things like that, so Michelle and her staff have been out there trying to politely tell those people that they can't do that, and, and again, they've been, how should I say, responded to by saying, it's a public facility, I can, I can be in here, so. There's some issues with the parking lot that the staff and, and Michelle are continuing to deal with, and, and we hope we can, can solve it relatively quick. And just a reminder for the citizens that are listening or are viewing, we do have an open position on the Library Board, representing the City of Marshall as well, I'm, I'm sure that we have other positions open on their, other commissions, so we'd like to get that, that position filled, so if you're interested in being on the Library Board, please see Kyle Box or Michelle, Kyle Box at City Hall or Michelle at the library. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Russ. We'll move then to councilmember individual items. Craig?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
I actually was excited to hear about something through some people that, and I don't know if Sharon or anybody in this room had anything to do with it, but apparently a bus from the Twin Cities came out on a Sunday and visited some of our businesses right downtown, who stayed open for these people, and it included Main Street and a couple of the other places, and apparently there's some group out of the cities that charters a bus and goes to small towns throughout the state. They chose Marshall.
There were two buses, Steve. One was at Brow Brothers, one was downtown.
There you go. So that is fantastic, and what great advertising for our community, and just wonderful, and the response I had, apparently the businesses were full, comments from proprietors, and people who know proprietors, and the people who were interacting were very positive, and people were really impressed with our small towns, so that's, that's a great thing. The other thing, I've been doing a lot of running, and again, dog waste on sidewalks is an issue, I don't like it. When I'm running, I don't like to step in the waste, so if you have a pet, please police after yourselves, and that's it.
Thank you, Steve. Don?
I have nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I am retired, as most of the rest of the council members are, and Mr. Ed Blum will soon be retired, we also always sometimes get asked to do various things, whether it be painting at the church, or, or taking our grandkids, wherever the case would be, or, or volunteering for other things, but, and one of the things I've been doing in the last week is substituting on crossing guards for the school. And, and while our public safety, I applaud them, because in the morning I see they drive by two, three, four times, but what I also see driving by is a number of parents on their cell phones, driving at it seems to be in excess of thirty miles an hour. So far, a kid hasn't been hit, and, and, well, I guess we did have one get hit on Southview Drive earlier in the year, but there was an incident on Southview Drive last week or two weeks ago, the crossing guard went out to let the child across the street, and seen a car coming, and they were heading east toward Hy-Vee, and the sun shining, and she didn't see the sign, or the driver did not see the sign, or whatever, so the crossing guard yelled, "Stop." The child thought the crossing guard was yelling, "Stop," at, at the child, so that child stopped as well, so they avoided a very serious situation, and I think the driver probably would have been very upset if, if something would have happened, like we all would have had. So that, the reason I'm telling you this background a little bit, I had a conversation with, with Jason, and, and we've all been to various communities, and I think of Sioux Falls, and I think of even our own community on Highway twenty-three, where we have school zone crossing, or school zone signs, and I asked Jason, I said, "Is that in the, in the plans for Marshall to do that on Saratoga and Southview, and, and maybe on Lion Street and all over?" And it was a very good conversation, because he assured me we have a grant of $375,000 that, that we're going to initiate these signs and, and things like that, that may be enticing people to slow down during the school zones. I think, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said it'll be a council decision whether we post a speed limit at, at fifteen, or twenty, or twenty-five, whatever the case would be, but again, I think people just need to be aware that it's, it's busy in the morning, it's busy at three o'clock in the afternoon for roughly twenty minutes to, twenty to thirty minutes, and, and again, I, I can't tell you how many people, how many times I've seen people on their cell phones and, and coffee cups and things, but I, they, I know they're going faster than thirty miles an hour, so please, I ask people on, on, from my plea and, and helping out with a crossing guard, slow down, it, you know, it just, you're going to get to the, your destination at the same time, or maybe a minute or two later, but, and again, I'm happy to say that probably next year, Jason, we will have signs and, and things installed, so that's my plea to, to slow down during school hours, and Jason, if you want to add to that, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. I think the other thing to add, Jason, would be, in addition to the signs, the refuge island for the pedestrians, so.
Right, and I forgot to bring that up, yeah.
So he gets halfway across that he does have an option of stopping there, so.
Right, good point, and it was a timely conversation, because we do have that project in next year's budget, we had the grant funds awarded, and it's an eighty-twenty funding split, and the twenty percent cost is being split and shared between the school districts that are participating and the city marshals, so really good project, proposed our push-button, flashing light type of crossers, as well as advanced school zone signage with radar speed indicated signage, so really nice setup. We've since added medians to the discussion, because on Saratoga, Southview, and Lion Street, where three of these are proposed to be put in, we do have a three-lane configuration, it's really easy to drop a median in there and add further safety benefit. I think that that's still a conversation that we're having with the school district, I'm not so sure if we sold them on the medians, but ultimately, that's a, something the council will have to act on. When we go to PIT, that's one of the projects we'll show you the plans on and, and discuss, and we'll bring that to council for some sort of action, too, later on. So we're, we're well on our path there to getting that project done, and it'll be a really nice project, it'll cover the middle school, the elementary school, Parkside, and Trulight School on College Drive.
Just one more thing on, you know, hopefully there'll be agreement on the, the refuge safety pedestrian island, in particular on Southview, where you mentioned the sun, and there are certain times of the year before the time change where it is difficult when you're driving into the sun.
Very difficult, yeah, yeah.
It's on Lion Street and Southview, because they're almost perfectly east, and it's really hard.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. John?
Nothing.
We'll move then to staff reports, City Administrator Sharon Hanson.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I did provide a hard copy of a strategic plan update, this is something that I think I wanted to do this past year, did not get to it earlier in the year, but did want to provide that, there's a lot of information there. Go back a little bit, the city council formally adopted the strategic plan in February of two thousand twenty, so we're nearing the midway point, we said it would be a two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four document, we're nearing the midway point, and maybe, maybe for a future discussion when there's more time, I know that you have spent a lot of time already in meetings today, because we started early, but maybe we just carve out some time and talk about this, and have an opportunity to discuss any revisions or changes if need be, but it does give you a status of each of those goals, and, and I'll just kind of leave it at that, and if you want to comment or ask questions on it individually, or, again, maybe we'll set up a time at a future meeting where carve out some more formal time to present and discuss, so that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Sharon, any questions for Sharon?
Mr. Mayor, just one other thing, I apologize, maybe Sharon, you want to bring up City Hall since the absence of Jim?
Yeah.
Yep, I mean, John, one of the two.
That's a good point. City Hall Committee did meet, and we are down to final payment discussions, and there is one remaining change order, it's change order fifteen. This is, some of that is a little residual from the wall, we have some additional heating costs, and, and there were some other smaller, minor changes. So City Hall Committee actually discussed this with Brennan Construction and made a, I would say, kind of an offer to settle the contract, the final change order fifteen, which would be the final payment, we have not heard back yet from Brennan, so that's a follow-up this week that we'd like to do. And outside of that meeting as well, I did contact Engen and asked for one final invoice from them as well, they did contract administration, it was about upper seventy thousand for, for their work, and we also wanted to negotiate that a little bit, some of the outline expectations of that contract weren't met fully, and I think they're going to send something to us on that, too, for City Hall Committee to review. Our goal is to finalize these payments, and I believe in that wants to close out these accounts before the end of the year, so that's what our goal is, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you. We'll move then to Director of Public Works, Jason?
Thank you. To follow up on the wastewater presentation, and Bob Van Moore mentioned that we would be reaching out for tour dates and times, I think we would do that in a poll format, like he mentioned, where everyone can just respond to several dates and times that work for them, and we would just maybe select some with a few council people in each session, just to run two or three people through at a time. Really encourage everyone to, to do it, even if you've already been out there numerous times, I think it's always nice to go through the process, those guys are really knowledgeable out there on what we do, and they can walk you through the entire treatment train, and you can see, you know, how your wastewater gets treated before it's discharged, as well as the added bonus of seeing all the new improvements, and the sludge storage facility is pretty impressive, too, to be inside of, I think it's, it's worth a look, so if you don't, if you don't have any interest, just respond and say, I won't, I don't have any interest, but.
They'll provide free samples, too.
Yeah.
Jason, just a question. Mayor, if more than three of us show up, is that an open meeting?
I think that we would, once we fill out that poll, we would just reach out to each of you with your time, and if, if that's okay with the council, that's what we had proposed to do, to avoid that. I've included in the back of the packet the Public Works Quarterly Newsletter. We've been doing these for a little while now. Jesse Dean puts a lot of time into them. They look really great. They just touch on some high-level concepts and thoughts from, from Public Works for the time of year. We've been posting those on the website. We also try to send them out on city social media. Just wanted that to be in the packet. And we'll try to keep those in the packet, so you're aware of what those look like when they come out. The work in the park is largely done for the year. They've, they've got quite a bit of concrete done, but now we're running into the seasonal change, and they're just doing some backfilling work, and no more concrete work should be done until next spring, or we wouldn't expect it. The pond project likely won't start until next spring, so should be a busy year in the park early next year, but we got a good start. Dunick did come in and complete the patching on Country Club Drive, as we talked about at, I think it was the last meeting. So that's, that's pretty good. We're, we're getting to a point where we should be close to closing that project. We still understand that we have a few pedestrian ramps to add in on North Fourth Street after meeting with the council, so we will be discussing that with our contractor. That might cause us to keep that project open into next year, but we'll see how that shakes out. And lastly, you probably noticed, or you may have noticed, out in the Westwood neighborhood that we had the street closed, and we had a, a section dug up around a manhole. We were making a sewer repair out in Westwood in advance of next year's Mill and Overlay project. We do televising in advance of those projects so we can make sure that we're not putting good pavement over top of something bad. We noticed an issue, and we wanted to act and get down there and cut out a section of pipe and, and, and put it in a new section and make it tight. So we got that done last week as well. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Question for Jason?
Jason, just a question on Independence Park Trails. Are there going, going to be any areas that are dug up and not con, not concrete for light up the night? I mean, I mean, do we have to make special precautions there?
No, I think we're pretty good. I haven't been out there to see how they tied in with the existing trail, and I'll check with our team tomorrow, but I'm pretty sure we got.
Okay.
Right up to it.
There's a, like a one-foot section on.
Just a gravel kind of filled in.
But it is gravel.
It's pretty minor.
Connecting, and then there's a, a little gravel section from the parking lot onto the trail, so.
Yeah, very minor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason? If not, the, Dennis?
Thank you. We're set to close on the purchase of the property formerly owned by Doug Mosh, 800 North, Highway 59. That closing is set for next Thursday, the 18th. So I, I'm not sure if the school closed. They were set to close on their purchase yesterday, the 8th. Took a little while to get the plat approved and filed, but all of that was approved late last week, so we should be set for closing next week. Oldies but goodies, the Helena continues. Couple of recent correspondence from the Department of Agriculture on, you'll see, there has been a lot of work done, a lot of excavation, and a lot of covered piles of contaminated soils. And I think that's what it's just going to set here for the winter. They'll have to do some additional testing on those piles in the future. And then there is a court hearing scheduled for the enforcement of the council order to remove manufactured homes from Broadmoor Valley. That was originally scheduled for next Monday, the 15th, but a continuance was granted, and the hearing will be held on December 6th for the enforcement of that, so.
Question for Dennis?
Why was the action delayed?
The defendant, Mr. Sheerhold's attorney, was not available on the 15th, and so.
Has there been any action on part to follow the requirement that we asked of?
There, there was a request that of the four manufactured homes to be removed, that two would be removed and two would be repaired. One's gutted by fire to be repaired, and that offer was rejected, which is brought about the court hearing to have all four of them removed. And an administrative search warrant was granted to allow the inspection of the other, other homes.
Any other questions for Dennis? Now we'll proceed with the remaining part of the agenda, which includes the administrator brief for the council's information, the information items, including the current building permits, and the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there anything further to come forward this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Seconded by John to adjourn discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.